On April 16th. We'll note that Commissioner Steiner is absent. All other commissioners are here. First item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes or modifications to the order of business? Hearing none, would there be a motion to approve the order of business?
I'll make a motion to approve.
You have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss?
I have one, Mr. President. Item G, I have no questions about the engineering agreements, but my question is how we're paying for this work.
This would be out of the sales tax collections for street improvements. That's the intended revenue source for that. Instead of doing...
It's out of the street fund then, in other words.
Yes, that is correct.
My thought is, I think our dollars are going to really be stretched in the near future. We've used, we're probably looking at this like we look at our Mill and Overlay projects.
Commissioner Jackson, this is exactly, in lieu of a Mill and Overlay project, it is our recommendation to do this project instead. Yes.
Yeah. As I recall, most of the Mill and Overlay work we've been doing has been in residential areas. This is commercial.
That is correct.
And I find myself wondering if this wouldn't be an appropriate time for special I wonder from a policy standpoint or a precedent standpoint, and I haven't thought this through real long, but perhaps the sales tax, Mill and Overlay money continues to be reserved for residential areas. We know we'll have a lot of that, and maybe when we get to a commercial area, maybe it's appropriate that we do special assessments.
We can certainly review that, Commissioner Jackson, because you're accurate in that it is a frontage road with commercial structures out front.
I mean, this deserves some discussion, but I think about the future, you know, that, again, maybe it's appropriate when we get in a commercial area to do traditional special assessments.
Mm-hmm.
Now, in this case, I expect you'd get cooperation. You may not always. I don't know what the rest of you think, but...
Well, we know that in the next two years, and I think we safely can say the next four years, we are going to have more infrastructure projects than we're going to receive impact funding for. So, we're going to borrow, likely borrow, quite a bit of money. As, you know, Mrs. Johnson and Mr. Coling and Mr. Kessel, myself, met with, you know, the bonding representatives, and we talked about borrowing upwards of $60 million here for the projects that we'll do in the next biennium, or this coming biennium. So, anything that we can get a developer to pay for, or we can special assess, will reduce the borrowing amount.
Yeah, and I realize this is a small project, relatively speaking, but I expect we're going to need every dollar we can get.
Yeah, and Commissioner Jackson, you raise a good point, because the genesis of this project was a Mill and Overlay. So, that we looked at the street fund as the payer source because of the, where it was born.
The project is needed. I think we should go ahead with the project, and I have no problem approving these agreements. But if it's not too late, maybe you should at least think about using specials.
It's a good thought. We'll do that.
Any other comments on the consent agenda?
I'll move re-approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion. Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson, Mrs. Stookart, Mr. Altman's. Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. We'll go to the non timetable agenda. The first item we have there is to hear the March financial report from Mrs. Johnson. No overheads? Oh, we do. Okay.
We'll begin with the general fund report. With 25 percent of the year completed, our property taxes equal $3.2 million, and were 93 percent collected compared to budget. Our other taxes and fees, which include financial institution tax and franchise fees, totals $107,000, and is 44 percent collected compared to budget. Our intergovernmentals include revenues we receive from the state and local governments, such as the highway distribution tax and the oil production tax. Our total revenue is $468,000, and is 11 percent collected compared to budget. Our state aid distributions will begin in April. Our licenses, fees, and services include building permit revenue and oil royalties, and is 20 percent collected compared to budget. Our building permit revenue is down $27,000 compared to last year. This category also includes our municipal court fines, which are 3 percent less than last year. Our total general fund revenues equal $4.7 million through March, and were 35 percent collected compared to budget. Our general fund expenses are broken down into groups. They include general government. This includes our administration, our court, finance, and buildings and grounds, and is 27 percent expended compared to budget. This overage is due mostly to timing. Our public safety includes police and fire, and is 19 percent expended compared to budget. Our engineering and streets, which now includes our community development, is 32 percent expended compared to budget. The overage here is due to budgeted equipment purchases in our street department. Our cultural services includes museum and forestry, and is 17 percent expended compared to budget. And our total general fund expenses equal $2.9 million through March, and were 21 percent expended compared to budget. In our enterprise funds, our water and wastewater revenues equal $1.8 million through March, and were 24 percent collected compared to budget. Our expenses in capital outlays total $1.6 million, which is 22 percent expended compared to budget. Our solid waste fund revenues total $946,000 through March, which is 25 percent collected compared to budget. And our expenses in capital outlays in this department total $577,000, which is 16 percent expended compared to budget. In our sales tax reports, in our 1 percent sales tax fund, we received $325,000 of 1 percent revenue in March, which is down 10 percent over last year. Our 1 percent sales tax fund is broken down into groups. The first is our 50 percent share, which is for street projects and infrastructure. In 2013, we are budgeting infrastructure projects totaling $850,000, but we have no direct transfer to our street projects fund. The second is our 20 percent share, which is for job creation and senior programs. This segment funds Stark Development, Elder Care, and RSVP, along with our senior citizen and Southwest Regional Grant Programs. The expenses through March total $185,000. And our third segment is the 30 percent share, which is set aside for capital improvements. The items budgeted here include a portion of the final BAC pledge payment, the animal shelter, trails construction, and park and rec improvements. In our half percent sales tax, we received $162,000 of revenue in March, which is also down 10 percent for the year. We have budgeted $4 million towards our public works building construction in 2013. In our hospitality tax, we received $76,000 of revenue in March, which is down 15 percent over last year. Our expenses include $50,000 subsidy for the Stark County Veterans Memorial, and $37,000 for the environmental assessment at the airport to upgrade the jet service. The occupancy tax breakdown shows our revenues total $40,000 in March, which is down 37 percent over last year. Our expenses include $81,000 paid to the CBB for their subsidy. Our street projects report, we received $32,000 in revenues, and we've expended $195,000 towards those projects through March. In our development impact fee program, this schedule shows the projects that have been approved and been assessed. This program has a balance of $39,000 at the end of March. Those are some of the highlights. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Are there any questions?
Just on the property taxes, there's 7 percent that haven't paid yet.
Correct.
So, is the next, like, May 1, there's a deadline, and then in October is the last deadline? Is that how that works?
I believe so. They're actually collected at the county. We do receive property tax revenue every month, so we will be receiving some throughout the year, but the bulk of it, we do receive by February 15.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, then, would there be a motion to accept the financial report?
So moved.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman's, Mrs. Stookart, Mr. Jackson. Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Items B and C will be conducted by Mr. Jackson, and I will abstain from the vote. So, Mr. Jackson?
Okay. Item B is the second reading for MDU franchise agreement. Mr. Coling, anything different?
Mr. Vice President, Commissioners, no, this ordinance is unchanged from second reading. It provides for natural continuation of the natural gas franchise held by MDU. City staff would recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions or comments by Commissioners? If not, we'll look for a motion for a second reading of the MDU franchise agreement.
I would make the motion to approve second reading and final passage of ordinance number 1506.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any more discussion? If not, we will vote. Mr. Altman's, Mrs. Stookart, and the chair votes aye. That motion carries. Item C is an amendment to the service area agreement that we approved, I believe, a couple of meetings ago, and, Mr. Coling, you can probably explain that better.
Yes, Mr. Vice President, Commissioners, if you recall back in February, the city commission approved a service area agreement that had been negotiated between MDU Resources Group and Rough Rider Electric Cooperative, providing for their respective service areas. We've been notified by the parties that they had an amendment to the agreement. It is not a substantive amendment. It simply changes the dates by which this agreement would be approved by the City of Dickinson and the Public Service Commission. So, there are no substantive changes to the agreement, and city staff would recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Coling? If not, let's have a motion for the amendment.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment.
In a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor of approving the amendment for MDU and Rough Riders say. Mr. Altman's.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookart.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That motion carries. Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. We'll move on to item D then. This is a job reclassification, and I think HR Coordinator Nomenek will present items, there's three items in item D, and she'll be presenting all three. So, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. The first item is the building official job description. We are asking to have that reclassified to, from a class four to a class five in the pay scale. After looking over the duties of this position and updating it to the compensable factors, this position scored 925 points, which puts it into a class five. As you will see in your notes, the bottom of a class five is 900 points. 900 to 1149, so that does move this position up one grade level. The reason that this did move up was because of the experience requirement of this position. It does require five years' experience as a building inspector, and it also requires that this position have a journeyman's plumber's license, which requires five years additional
Does this position supervise other staff, too?
It does. This position supervises the building inspectors.
And how many building inspectors do we have?
We have one building inspector and two code enforcement positions.
And I can't remember if you said, did civil service?
Yes. Civil service has recommended this also.
Other questions or comments?
We need a motion.
We would need a motion either to approve or disapprove the reclassification.
I'll make a motion to approve the reclassification.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion to approve with the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Stookart, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Altman's. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll let you continue.
Okay. Number two is a new job description, Deputy Clerk of Court I. We have a clerk of court, and then we had a deputy clerk of court. In reviewing these job descriptions, the clerk of court stayed in the same class that it was in. The deputy clerk of court stayed in the same class, but we were given approval for another position in 2013, realizing that both of those positions did not need to be on the same grade level. So, we renamed the deputy clerk of court to deputy clerk of court II, and we're asking to create a new job description for the deputy clerk of court I at a lower grade level. So, that would be a class I rather than a class II.
And we have that job description in our materials.
Yes.
So, are there any comments or questions regarding this item? So, you would be seeking a motion to approve the classification of deputy clerk of court I?
Correct.
Is there such a motion?
I would make that motion.
And we have the second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman's, Mrs. Stookart, Mr. Jackson. Chair votes aye, so the motion carries.
The last item is just the hiring journal that we have included in your packet. I can just give you a little rundown on some of the positions that we have open. We recently hired a street maintenance operator, leaving us with one more street maintenance operator position open. We just did interviews and have not selected a candidate yet for that position. Sanitation office assistant, we just filled that position, and she started today. Police officers, we have three openings. Three offers were extended for those openings. Two were accepted, but we're still in the background phase of that. So, I will open another position for police officer. City forester was an internal candidate that was, that filled that position. Communication specialist position was recently filled. Part-time library assistant. We're in the interview process for a patrol sergeant at this time. We do have one code enforcement officer position open, and we have 19 seasonal positions
How do you think you're going to do with your seasonal positions this year? What's your sense?
Not real well.
Not real well.
I haven't been getting a whole lot of applicants. I don't know. I guess we're going to call back some of those folks that worked for us last year, try to get some of those to return, but other than that, we just have not been getting a lot of applicants.
And if there's people watching that are interested in being a seasonal employee, can you briefly describe the application process? Is it fairly extensive, or what do they do?
Sure. No, it really is not that involved. You can go to our website at DickinsonGov.com, or go to Job Service, fill out an application right on our website, or at Job Service. You can pick one up here at City Hall, and we'll review the applications and do the interviews, and that's about all there is to it. We aren't really requiring experience for those seasonal positions. Some nice hours, and Monday through Friday, day shifts.
Excuse me. What are the qualifications?
For the seasonal positions, we really don't. They're not requiring a CDL. These are positions that would do lawn mowing, assisting those people who do carry the CDLs. We have a code enforcement position, street positions, several buildings and grounds, a lot of mowing lawns, weed eating, vector control, those type of things.
Age requirements?
18.
18?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do we have a salary?
I did not bring that with me. I believe it starts at 10:50 and up to 11:87, I believe. Is that, that's where the scale is?
Okay. Thank you.
And the hours, did you talk about the hours at all?
It kind of depends on the position. We also have some museum positions, so, you know, it depends on what department they're working in, street department, water department, usually works Monday through Thursday. These positions may work Fridays during the summer as well, but it would be, you know, seven to five type hours, Monday through Friday, no weekends.
So, it's pretty good hours.
Very good, yeah.
Well, anything else?
That's all I have.
Thank you for reporting. Item E is a liquor license transfer. I'm assuming this is Mr. Coling? It's Mr. Kessel. Okay.
Thank you, President Johnson. City Commission, tonight you have a request to change or transfer a liquor license from Town and Country Liquor to Town and Country Liquor LLC. You have a resolution that's on your desk that was not part of your original packet that I'd like to have you refer to. One of the things that the resolution does request is that you waive the fee related to this transfer. Normally, there would be about a $2,800 transfer fee. The reason we're asking for the waiver is because the, this transfer is essentially a legal one more than anything else. The ownership is remaining the same. They're simply incorporating the business. So, it, I feel that it's fair to not charge the transfer fee in this scenario, since they'll have the same, nothing will change in terms of the ownership at all, so that the same control will be felt, both with the sole proprietorship and the LLC as it is today. So, with that, unless Attorney Coling would like to add anything that is existing in the resolution, it'd be our recommendation to transfer the liquor license and to waive the transfer fee.
And it's resolution number what?
Mr. President, it's be resolution 17-2013.
You've heard the introduction. Are there any comments or questions regarding resolution 17?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 17-2013.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Stookart, Mr. Altman's, Mr. Jackson. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. That brings us to item F. These are Southwest Regional Grant Awards. Mr. Kessel?
Thank you, President Johnson. Each year, the city does return sales tax collections through two different grant programs. Tonight, I'll be presenting both of those grant program recommendations to you. The first is Southwest Regional Grant. This year, the granted amount is just over $50,000. We do have a local committee, including Commissioners, that sit on the Board of Recommendation and came up with the requests, or the awarded recommendations before you. Again, this year, as we have had in years past, the requested amounts far exceed the revenue that we have available. This year, we had $125,000 in requests, actually $127,000 in requests, and our recommendation includes just over $51,000 in awards. They're all listed for you. You should have a copy, a revised copy, that was placed on your desk this evening, and if you have any questions about these requests, I'll try to answer them today.
Mr. Kessel, I don't want you to go through every one of these, but for the viewing public, can you pick out two or three that kind of stood out in your mind and just tell us what they are and how much your committee is recommending be granted?
You know, the requests, one of, some of the rules that we use to create our recommendations is we'd like to see requests that are bricks and mortar, or physical equipment, things of that order. So, you oftentimes see bleep playground equipment, such as the City of Beach and Bellfield asked for and were approved. You know, Bellfield, for instance, was approved for over $8,000, or at least that's our recommendation this evening. A walking and biking trail in Beach as well for $5,000. Fire hall improvements in Galva for three, daycare in Kildere for four. So, you'll see a lot of fire equipment in here as well. New England Rural Fire Protection has a grant recommendation in here of a little over $1,000. And then an ice skating arena in Richardson to help with that project of $4,000. So, we really try to spread the dollars around, and I think this committee did a nice job of recognizing valuable projects.
Okay. Well, thank you for putting a little bit of, you know, color into this, so appreciate that. Are there other comments or questions for Mr. Kessel on this item? Would there be a motion either to approve or amend or disapprove the recommendation?
I'll move that we approve the grant awards.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve the recommended grant awards with the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson, Mr. Altman's, Mrs. Stookart. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Let's do these senior citizen grant awards also.
Okay. Thank you. As I stated before, we also fund senior citizens in the Southwest area. We have grant awards recommended for each a day in the amount of $44,000, just over that. Again, some of the highlights of the grant awards, Amadon requested $6,500 and received $5,000, or at least that's what's recommended today. We were able to much closely align the requests and the awarded amounts. We had requests of $66,500 and we were able to award $44,000. So, a lot of the requests that were made were funded, and the facilities include Amadon, Beach, Bellfield, Bowman, Dickinson Dodge, Dunn Center, Hebron, Hettinger, Kildere, Marmouth, Mott, New England Reader, Regent, Rame, Scranton, South Heart, and Taylor. And Richardson, excuse me.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kessel. You've heard his report and recommendations. Any comments or questions? Again, you have the same three options, either approve, amend, or disapprove.
Make the motion to approve the grants as suggested.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? That will vote. Mr. Altman's, Mrs. Stookart, Mr. Jackson. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. It's 5:00 PM. We have a 5:00 PM timetable agenda item, and that is to hear from Southwest Water Authority. And here to lead us off is Mary Masood, their CEO. So, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, boy, I'm too used to testifying, aren't I?
Yes.
Okay. Mary Masood, manager, CEO of Southwest Water Authority. I do have with me this evening as well, Sindhuas Polari- I do have with me this evening as well, Sindhuas Polari Grenolds. She is our project engineer with the North Dakota State Water Commission. I have Tim Fridgie with us. He is also a project engineer, oversight with the North Dakota State Water Commission. And Jim Lennington, who's our project engineer with Bartlett and West out of Pismarck. I'm here for several purposes, so where to begin? Kind of a project overview, we do have on the agenda for you also a memorandum of understanding to move forward with some project works. And I did bring to present to you as well, some annual reports that we present each and every year. Okay, we'll start with the, you have a packet of information, let's start there, I guess. How's that sound? Kind of a quick oversight, and do I need to be pinned to the mic, or can I walk over to my maps?
I think you do need the mic. Maybe we could have the maps moved to you.
I've got a Vanna White, I'm good.
There you go.
First of all, is our project overview map, and, oh, thanks, Jim. We have areas highlighted in blue and areas highlighted in green. The areas in blue are served by the water treatment plant from Dickinson. The areas in green are served by our Oliver Mercer North Dunn Water Treatment Plant located seven and a half miles north of Zap. The areas in green will be served from that plant, and we're continuing with construction in that region. The tan areas are served from Missouri West Water System, and, ooh, very good, okay. And the striped areas are now served from the new treatment plant north of Zap. We'll also be serving the Grassy Butte Pocket north of Fairfield, Kildare Mountain Pocket eventually off of the new treatment plant north of Zap. We will also serve Dunn Center, Halliday Dodge, Golden Valley off that treatment plant. With construction in this upcoming biennium, they'll do a few things of most concern here would be it'll allow for additional treatment capacity out of the City of Dickinson to serve both Dickinson and the regions east and west of there. With all the growth that we're facing, we need additional treatment capacity, not only for the city, but for everybody in the blue area. Currently, the Southwest Water Authority, the State Water Commission, and the City of Dickinson have an agreement. The city owns the current treatment facility. We took over operations management and maintenance of that on April 1st of 2000. What we are looking at doing now, and that would be the areas highlighted on this other map, and it shows you the treatment plant and the six million gallon basin south of there, the lime sludge ponds for discharge. That's for byproduct of the treatment process. So, this memorandum of understanding would transfer ownership of that facility to the state of North Dakota. It would also transfer approximately four acres due east of that facility where the Public Works Building currently is. It's approximately four acres, and it's about 10 feet west of that first building, Public Works Building. We're looking at this time of building an additional six million gallons in treatment capacity that would be used for the city and the Southwest Pipeline Project to meet the growth needs that are here for each and all of us, each and every one of us. So, some of the highlights besides that.
Mary, can just, so if you construct a new treatment, water treatment facility, you would still operate the existing facility?
Correct.
So, we would have two?
To begin with, ideally, we'd be, build a brand-new 18 million gallon per day treatment facility, but cost is prohibitive. So, we will start with six, and eventually add to that, to an 18 down the road, and that'll be a new treatment plant.
At the, at the existing site, or you would add 12 million gallons of treatment capacity elsewhere in your system?
It would be at this new site.
Okay.
Okay? And then eventually decommission the existing treatment plant. Those properties, when they're no longer used by the authority or this pipeline project, would then return back to the City of Dickinson. It does not allow for, it allows also for the use of the lime sludge ponds, because that's how we currently dispose of the lime sludge. Eventually, we'll be building a mechanical facility with the new plant, and that'll be hauled out to the landfill. So, in addition to that, it's the property, and then we are also doing along with this a joint finished water pumping station. The city's pumps are old, they're in the basement of the treatment plant, they're difficult to access, and we need, the city needs bigger pumps, newer pumps, and it would be in the best interest for both the city and the authority to build a separate pumping facility to upgrade our capacities. And that will be north of the current water treatment plant, is what we're looking at as a proposed location right now. And then in this agreement, we have kind, split out of how we would do the costs of this facility. The facility would be jointly owned, it would be, the construction costs would be shared equally between the state or the project and the city. As far as the site modifications and piping, it'd be a 33 for the city and 67% for the State Water Commission. The city's pumps and the city's piping would be the city's responsibility. The transfer pumps for the project would be the state's responsibility, as well as the piping. The generator would be a 50-50 cost share, as well as the engineering. The State Water Commission will take the lead, do the design in cooperation with the city's engineers. The city will pay, or the commission will, State Water Commission will pay the bills and bill the commission for, for the work being done.
And what is the timing on the joint pumping facility, in terms of, when would we expect completion?
Does, hmm? Next year? Okay, spring of 2015.
2015?
Yes. Starting now.
And what is the current estimated cost?
$6 million.
Well, roughly $3 million apiece.
Correct.
Okay.
And then the value of the property that the city will transfer will be considered as part of that joint cost share. So, part of it is the appraisal from the city, and that'll be considered part of the city's cost for that facility.
Well, you may owe us money the way the property's appraising around here, so.
I know, it's a scary thing, isn't it?
I was just going to say, that'll be about $3 million.
Oh. Well, you know, we're, when we're doing this, we're looking at options. Originally, we're going to build all our treatment facilities up north by the lake, so that was one of our options. We looked at that east of Dickinson by a raw water reservoir. We looked at this as an option. Anyway, there were four options that are in our engineering report on what the best option would be, and since you can't not treat water, this seemed most viable, that down the road, this 12 million facility will need to be replaced, and that'll be on our dime as far as all our project users, so.
So, the, the new water treatment facility, the six million gallon per day one, what is your estimated in-service date for that?
Am I saying 16, 17? 16, 17, somewhere in there. We plan on do, we're starting design. We will be doing membrane procurement. We'll do the mechanical sludge handling facility in this upcoming biennium, and should have final design done in this upcoming biennium, and begin construction the following. Does that sound right? I gotta look at my spreadsheets. That are in your packet of information.
But you're thinking in-service is in, not until 2017?
Am I out of line on that? Okay. I'm, I'm not out of line, Mr. President.
Okay. Then going back to the pumps, as I understand it, the pumping station is needed, as you said, because the pumps we have now are old and inadequate, and we can't, you're, our, our city's allocation is six million gallons per day, the pumps won't even allow us to get to the six million gallons per day. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so, that's just to use our allocated amount?
Yes, and to build in capacity for the future for you.
Right, okay. And how much additional capacity is, will be there?
I'm going to say an extra three, three to four is, for, I'm for Dickinson, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to 10.
Okay, so that'll...
So, total will be 10 for Dickinson and eight for the project, for the area in blue.
Well, I don't mean to monopolize and ask all the questions. Other questions here by, by our commissioners? Were you ready for questions, or did I?
Sure, no.
Sorry.
Feel free.
Did you have more you were going to tell us?
We can, just review the information in your packet. It's a good opportunity to educate people, the general public, and those we serve as far as the project and our growth and what the needs are throughout the region.
I do have another question, and that, if, if the new treatment plant comes online, say in late 2016 or in 2017, do you have enough raw water delivery capacity to, right now, to operate?
No, sir, we don't. That's in our plan, too. In fact, in the last two weeks, we've been doing geotechnical work up at the intake for a second intake. So, along with that, besides what we need here in Dickinson and to complete Oliver Mercer North Dunn, we need a second intake, we need to upgrade pumps and increase pump sizes at our pump stations, we need more water storage, and paralleling some pipeline eventually. So, we'll be doing that in the interim as well.
So, are you comfortable right now believing that that'll be done in time for the water treatment, the new one to operate in 2017?
I am.
Okay, great.
You should be, too.
I should.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Kessel?
Ms. Massid, I'm curious, you've been working hard at the legislature, we've been helping as much as we can, but since this straddles a couple different, construction actually straddles a couple different bienniums, do you have the funding in place today to make this all happen, or are you expecting additional funding down the road in a different legislative session?
We currently have signed into law $21 million for the upcoming biennium, and that is to do, that's to do the main transmission line going west in northern Dunn County, to build water, water reservoirs along that line, as well as at the treatment plant, the OMND treatment plant. The, we are hopeful that we will receive adequate funding, 79 million total in the, for the 1315 biennium, and an additional, probably in the 70 to 79 million in the next biennium.
So, you're roughly in need of about $120 million more over the course of the next two bienniums?
Well, we're saying about $160 million, 164. Part of that, too, is deferred construction things that we've put off. As we build our project, we've always tried to get water to people and defer construction until it's actually needed, additional tanks, storage, pumps, et cetera.
Ms. Massid, I know that, or I think that you've had to say no to some rural development north of Dickinson, I believe, not too far from Dickinson.
Correct.
Can you comment a little bit more about remedying some of that?
Certainly. Commissioner Jackson, we are paralleling pipeline north of Dickinson currently, that blue, the blue line, adds up to the Dunn County line, and then just north of that, we will be putting in a water storage reservoir this summer, that's 200,000, 300,000 gallons. In that next blue area, we're also paralleling some pipeline to give us some additional capacity. So, that will definitely help currently.
And that's what's happening this summer?
They started construction last fall. On the pipeline, we're also paralleling pipeline down in the Freiburg area. We've, the commission has open bids on the Neuradic Tank. I expect them to award that next month.
Thank you.
Sure.
The current city comprehensive plan, looking at our peak water usage month, which is July, projects that we could have water shortages in as early as July of 2014. So, it appears to me that if that's true and the growth, if the actual population growth matches the projected population growth, we should be prepared to deal with peak shortages probably for three consecutive years, 14, 15, and 16. Does, would you agree?
I would totally weather-dependent. I, it's possible, and if it is, it'd be very short-term.
Right, it's during just the peak month.
And that just depends on when it's hot and dry, and it depends on if we're in a drought or, or not. Because previously, our peak year was always 2008, and that was a drought year for us. And you'll just see it then, we'll be operating 24/7 to bring water to the city so you can serve your customers. You may have to limit lawn watering, industrial use, things like that.
Uh huh. Well, I think we're intending, I know, when the mechanical plant opens in the fall of 2014, to limit our industrial sales for treated water and encourage industrial sales be used, be satisfied with the gray water or the treated water from the mechanical plant, and not sell potable water for industrial uses. I think that would be our intention, so.
Yes, it's a good idea, Mr. President.
Okay. Mr. Kessel?
Ms. Massid, if that eventuality does come into existence, does that mean that, will that affect in any way your operations at the east facility, your raw water supply?
The only time we've had to shut off our raw water to date is when we've had a major line break in our raw water line. Generally, it's on the treated, treated side, but yes, if there is a shortage, they'd be shut off as well, and we need the treated water for our citizens.
Okay.
But we have that facility and one by Dodge. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions?
So, Mary, we should be encouraging our new developers and people that are buying homes to put more gravel and rock in their yards?
It would be wise not to be a water hog, to be more conservative in water use, especially outside.
We see more and more of that, and I think that's a good plan.
It is. There's areas, especially Arizona, they were, the cities were paying people to rip up their grass.
Do you have any more charts behind those that you're going to show us?
Hey, that's it.
That's it?
Sure.
Any other comments that you want to make? I think what you're asking tonight, or is being suggested, is that we approve this memorandum of understanding. Is that true, Mr. Coling?
Yes, Mr. President, there is a memorandum of understanding that was placed at your desks. We did work with Ms. Mossad and the other Southwest Water officials in order to produce this. And as she states, there are basically three parts to the memorandum of understanding. The first part deals with the transfer of the existing water treatment plant to the State Water Commission, and defines that property that would be transferred. The second part of the agreement deals with the new water treatment facility to be constructed and the transfer of that four-acre parcel. That's the parcel that the city's Public Works Department is currently occupying. And once the new Public Works building gets built, we can vacate that property and then transfer that over to Southwest Water Authority and the State Water Commission as well. And as was stated, the value of that parcel would be appraised, and that value would be used to offset the city's contribution to the finished water pumping facility. And then the third part of the agreement deals with that finished water pumping facility and details out the cost shares, which you heard about. We do believe the memorandum adequately expresses the understanding of the parties. There'll be some other agreements that we'll need to amend and update in order to accomplish all of this, but this agreement is, meets with city staff's approval, and we would recommend the commission approve it.
Before you do, may I comment that we still need our legal counsel and the Attorney General's office to sign off on some of the last changes. I don't think there'll be anything substantive, but I just wanted to make you aware.
Well, we can act on what's in front of us, and if it changes down the road, it'd just come back for action again, so. Any comments or questions here regarding the memorandum of understanding? Mr. Castle?
President Johnson, I just wanted to remind the commission that you have issued a task order to K L J to work on the design of the city's pumps and such in this facility. So Mr. Lennington is working with K L J staff to facilitate this structure.
Okay, anything else? You've heard Ms. Massad's presentation and Mr. Coling's explanation and recommendation. Would there be a motion regarding the memorandum of understanding?
I'll move, we approve the MOU with Southwest Water.
I'll second it.
The motion, the second, further discussion. Hearing none, we will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Olman?
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Very good.
Thank you. Review the information if you have any questions, if you'd want me to come back and present to you where we're at with our project, I'd be happy to do so. I'm just gonna mention briefly that you did receive our audit report, which is for year end 2012 and 2011. We did receive a clean audit report. You also received a copy of our O and M, our operations and maintenance, for the pipeline and for the treatment plant. And we did complete 816,000 rehab project at the water treatment plant here in Dickinson. We've, the inspections are included, sanitary surveys by the Department of Health. We're in compliance with the Safe Drinking Water Act of 1974 and the 11 major rules. And with our system, we currently operate five public water systems. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Did we vote? We did, okay.
Okay.
It's getting late in the day. All right.
Thank you.
Well, you kept talking, so I thought maybe we hadn't voted. Okay, well, if we could get you to move your charts, so, they were good charts, though, by the way, so. Okay, we have a 515 public hearing, and that involves the West River Community Center expansion. This is our second public hearing on this topic, so we'll declare the public hearing open and invite comment. And first, like to invite those who have concerns or may oppose this West River Community Center expansion to come to the podium first. You can state your name, and then we'll hear your comments. So anyone that opposes, please come to the podium. There is no one, then, that wishes to speak that opposes the project? Are there any comments from those who are in favor of the project? All right, there's no one from the public that wishes to comment either way, so we'll declare the public hearing closed. Mr. Coling has prepared a resolution regarding this matter in your packet, and, Mr. Coling, I'll let you introduce that and give us the number.
Mr. President, commissioners, the resolution before you provides for the contribution of a portion of the city's sales tax funds and hospitality tax funds for planned improvements to the West River Community Center campus. This commission has held public hearings on the matter and hasn't received no objection. The maximum potential funding level, as recited in the resolution, is $22 million. If the resolution is adopted, the commission would, as a part of its annual budgeting process, allocate funds from the hospitality tax or the sales tax funds in order to provide monies for those projects. Alternatively, this resolution does provide for the authority to bond for those projects, and then if the tax funds here are pledged for repayment of the bonds, the amortization schedule and the contribution schedule would be set out as part of that bonding process. There was one update to the resolution since it was provided to you in your packets. We had a conversation with bond counsel, and they recommended the addition of a paragraph, it is paragraph four in the resolution at your tables, and that paragraph provides for retaining Doherty and Company as the bond underwriter, and Ernst &amp; Stewart Wagner as the bond counsel to complete the process for issuing bonds for the community center expansion. This would be resolution number 18-2013, and I would happy, be happy to entertain any questions.
Mr. Coling, at the very end, it says dated this 15th day of April. Since we couldn't act on it on the 15th, would you be changing that date?
Yes, Mr. President, we would change that to the 16th.
Okay. I've also updated an analysis of the cost of the project, along with the financing, and also updated the sales tax projections. I've handed that out. Mr. Kramer, if you'd like a copy of that for your group back there, you can approach the podium with a bowed head, and, you got one there? Okay. But we met with the bonding professionals, and they pointed out that there would be some bond fees, so I've added $200,000 to the total cost of the project for bond fees. So we get a project cost now of 22.5 million as opposed to 22.3, which brings the financing amount up to 15.5. We had a very good meeting with the bound, bond counsel, and I think their recommendation would be that we finance over a 10-year period, but the bonds would be callable after five years. So we would have the option of treating it as five-year financing, or six-year, or seven-year, which I think is a good option. It sounded like at today's market, the interest rate would be around 2.5%, so that's the number I've used to get our annual payment. We're assuming that from the private fundraising that we would have at least $200,000 a year in private donations coming in off of pledges. That would leave us an annual payment of $1,571,000. I just split that 50% between the 30% sales tax fund and the hospitality tax fund, and that's a decision that commission will make each year in terms of the budget, how you pay for that. But if you look at the sales tax projections worksheet, I've assumed no increase in sales tax revenues in 2013 over 2012. Again, no increase in 2014, and then beyond that, a 3% per year increase. You can see we would be pulling $6 million out of the 30% sales tax fund between the years 2013 and 2014 to help finance this, and then $786,000 per year thereafter, beginning in 2015. And with the hospitality tax, it would be $786,000 per year in 2015, until the bonds are redeemed or paid. You can see that, along with the projections I've mentioned, the 30% fund does not go into the negative, it continues to grow, and the same is true with the hospitality tax fund. It should be able to grow, too, and meet its other obligations. So I did run just a small sensitivity test. I said, what would happen if 2013, we only collected 90% of what we did in 2012, and then had the same assumptions thereafter? It would have the 2014 amount still be positive, but a very small amount for the balance, and then it would start to grow again. So it looks to me like this is a very doable project, in that we have the financial ability to handle it. So, questions or comments?
Mr. President, the only comment I would make is, you know, I think the project is due. I think we should move forward. I really liked the way the resolution was put together. I think it, I think it really captures the sequence of thought, the logic behind the three projects, really, and we should move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Other comments?
I agree, this is a much-needed project, and reiterating, Commissioner Stein is not here, we deserve it.
I've never heard Mr. Commissioner Steiner be so eloquent before, so. Other comments? Well, it's resolution 18. You can either move the approval of resolution 18, or you can move that we do something else, I guess, but.
I would make the motion to approve.
Second.
We have the motion to approve resolution number 18, and it's second. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Olman's?
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Well, we'll move on with the rest of the meeting, then, and we'll go back to the non-timetable agenda, and under reports, we have a safety report. That's Mr. Castle, okay. Oh, this is Mr. Castle's report, so all right.
Thank you, President Johnson. The report this evening was, I can't believe I'm gonna say this, but ably produced by police, or Fire Chief Seavock. I'm simply reporting that. For the first quarter ending in March, we had 19 injuries reported, eight of those 19 required medical attention. This compares to 13 reported injuries or incidents in the first quarter of 2012, with two of those requiring medical attention. In an effort to slow and preferably stop this increase in injuries, we've begun a quarterly process, or quarterly meetings, with the safety representatives of each department to recognize and address individual and shared concerns. In addition, we have distributed a safety survey to all employees. We will share the results of that survey when they are available. And just for the commission's information, we do, when a, when a report does come to us, especially one that does have an injury to our staff, we do review that as an executive team and as a leadership team, to make sure that our policies have been followed, and to identify any issues that could be relieved or resolved, so that the incidents don't happen again. The only solace that I have in reporting to you that our safety issues are up is that most of those injuries have been minor, scrapes and bruises and sprains and strains. There are a couple, though, that do cause us concern. There have been seven inhalation hazards and four pathogen exposures. Those could be very serious, and certainly, they mostly involve our emergency management folks, so it's, the pathogen exposures do. So we are making every effort, we've redoubled our efforts from the safety perspective. I've made sure that every department has a representative on the safety committee, and there was a financial incentive for that to happen this year as well. So I think we're getting pretty good compliance so far, and hopefully that will turn into results in the very near future. There are a couple legislative bills that I want to just briefly update you on. The first one is 1358. This has received a great deal of media and press lately. This is essentially the funding bill for western North Dakota and the oil patch. 1358 was significantly revised as it came out of the House. It had approximately $12.5 million slated for the city of Dickinson. The Senate revisions and amendments reduced that amount to just over $7 million. Our requests have always been north of the 12.5 that the Senate, or that the House version has. President Johnson and I are going to Bismarck tomorrow, and we're gonna meet with Senate leadership and discuss our needs. This was a meeting requested by Senate leadership, so we're excited to share with them exactly where our needs lie, and hopefully allow them to understand exactly where we're at and the type of projects that necessitate a funding scenario that includes more than $12.5 million on an annual basis. Also, 1145 was passed and sits on the governor's desk. This bill provides revenue back to cities. It is a fire premium, every insurance premium that is written that includes a coverage for the fire department, or fire coverage, has a certain amount of that that goes to our fire department. It's been shared 50% with the state and 50% with local public entities, fire protection agencies. This bill has returned 100% of those funds back to local fire protection districts and entities, which will result in about another $67,000 in revenue coming back, assuming the governor signs it to the city of Dickinson. So that was a success, and I commend Fire Chief Seavock and the, and the commission and groups that he works with to get that passed. Also, there's another bill that's being heard regarding pilot programs or payment in lieu of taxes. If you recall, the city commission did approve a pilot program for low-income housing project recently. If this bill is passed, it would automatically provide a pilot for projects such as that and remove the city commission from making those types of decisions. This is a concern, I think, for us, because they, because of the automatic nature, and it wouldn't allow you as a city commission to tailor those pilots to meet the needs of local interests and needs. So we have opposed that portion of the bill, but not necessarily the bill as a whole, because it does do a lot of good in other areas. So I just wanted to provide you with that quick update and let you know that the session is starting to wind down, and a lot of the funding, major funding bills have yet to be acted upon. So there'll be a lot of work going on in the next couple of weeks at the legislative session. With that, I'll conclude and answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Castle, with respect to 1358, I think it's 1358 which is the funding for western North Dakota oil funding?
That's correct.
I think you're probably aware that tomorrow morning at planning and zoning, we're gonna be considering three pretty significant plots. We have a number of other subdivisions at various stages of the process. I can't imagine that if this funding level stays the way 1358 is right now, that we're not gonna have to say no to some of that growth. We're just gonna have to, I don't see a way... We're just going to have to, I don't see a way to put together that revenue, any other way that we can allow all those subdivisions to go forward because of the terrific cost of infrastructure. Do you think I'm overreacting?
Not at all, Commissioner Jackson. I spent a good deal of my morning putting together a map that includes all of the projects that we have done and will do or plan to do. Community Development Director Cortan, Public Works Director Zeroff, and City Engineer Watson helped me in the creation of that map. And I would completely agree that if the funding levels that are proposed with the Senate amendments, we would have to make some very difficult decisions on plots and providing infrastructure to those plots.
I can't imagine that Williston, Minot, other communities won't be faced with similar decisions. So it sounds like we're going to keep people, you know, in the RVs and that kind of thing is what it sounds like to me.
I've had discussions with leadership from both of the communities that you mentioned, and they are in the exact same boat that we are in. There's also, in addition to President Johnson and I, there's representative from those other communities who will also meet with the same Senate leadership that we are at separate times, and I'm sure they'll be singing the same song that we do, very, very similar.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Cortan, do you have a sense of when the comprehensive plan, now that we've approved, will be available to us, you know, when the printing will be done?
I've been talking to KLJ. There's a final portion that they are revising, the public comments, and as part of the addendum for that, I've asked them to at least submit the electronic versions to us. So I would imagine I should be getting that very shortly. Just so everybody's aware, the final version, with the edited versions that were approved in our last meeting, is available. So the vast majority of it is available at DickinsonPlan.com. There are some minor editing that we did in the last, the second reading of our ordinance, but it should be up there very shortly. We just want to make sure we have everything together.
Older, low-tech-type guys like to have a printed copy in our hands to be able to look at. And that's really what I'm interested in, is when do I get my printed copy?
I would imagine within the next couple of weeks, if not sooner.
Okay. I've made a note, within fourteen days. All right. All right, we'll move on to Public Safety, Tab 5. We'll hear from the Fire Department Chief Seavock.
President Johnson, commissioners, the report of activities for the Dickinson Fire Department for the month of March is as follows. March incidents, we were down a little bit from 2012. Seven percent decrease. We don't mind seeing a decrease in incident response. Excuse me. Hundred and twenty-five percent, however, still increased over 2011. First quarter compared to 2012, one percent increase over 2012 for the quarter, fifty-seven percent increase over 2011. Kind of plateauing a little bit. And again, when it comes to incident response, a plateauing or a decrease is something we don't mind seeing. We'd rather see the decrease than the increase. In fire prevention activities for the month of March, 114 routine inspections. Now, there is something we'd like to see an increase on. Follow-up inspections, forty-seven, thirty-two construction, one childcare, four miscellaneous, two tours, lectures or demos, and seven plan reviews of various projects. One of the things we've done is all of our inspectors, all of our field personnel are now out in the field with a tablet and a portable printer. One of the reasons you saw that increase in routine inspections is because the people can stay out in the field. Everything that they need to do, the database, they need all the information entered in, all of that's now happening in the field. When they come back to the office, and they come back to the office at a later time now, everything that they used to have to take time to do in the office is already done. And so far, that's been working very well for us. I want to include some pictures of some of the things our inspectors are encountering in the field. In this case, what you're seeing here is a bedroom environment in a shop. This blue wall that does not extend all the way to the ceiling is all that separates this particular bedroom from the shop area, where they're, right on the other side of this blue wall, there's an overhead door where they pull semis in. So our concerns here, and with the other pictures that I'm going to show you, it's a nice-looking bedroom, you've got to admit, isn't it? Our concerns here are that we don't have the proper separation between a residential living area and a shop environment. We don't have the proper means of egress for those people. We don't have the proper means of notification, smoke detectors or fire alarms, for the people that are going to be in that environment. And more importantly, probably than all of it, or as important as all of it, we don't know they're there. We respond to a fire call to that building at 2:00 in the morning. We're responding to a shop. We're responding to a commercial or an industrial occupancy, not a residential facility. We have no idea they're there. This is a bedroom. These, which I mistakenly thought was a shower stall and a bathroom, is actually a linen closet and a bookshelf. This is the shop environment. This is right where they are. No separation whatsoever. Again, on the other side of this desk is a bed. That delineated one bedroom. This area right here is another bedroom. And again, this is in a shop environment. Very nice. They've done some nice work. You've got to give them credit for that. But again, the separation, the protection, it's not there. This, again, this has been partitioned off in a shop, and they've created a bedroom. Shop environment, motor home being lived in, in the shop. There were some plumbing issues on this. And in all of these cases, commissioners, we involve City Planner Cortan, and we involve building inspection staff. These types of incidents are followed up on by Mr. Cortan and his department and his staff with letters and/or, God forbid, a phone call from Mr. Cortan in some cases. This one, not only was it unique in that here they are living inside the shop environment, but the plumbing was, just ran right over to the floor drain. Same shop, flammable liquid tanker parked in that same environment. Now, that flammable liquid tanker, not only does it not belong in that building because of zoning, it does not belong in that building because that building wasn't designed or built to house a flammable liquid tanker. Activities for the department in the month of March. We took two days to upgrade our CPR and first aid training for all of our members. Our staff spoke at the Career Expo at DSU on March 12. March 16, we hosted firefighter certification testing, where we saw four of our members certified, two to the firefighter one level, two to firefighter two certification, and two members from Dickinson Rural that trained with us also received certification, as well as four members from the New England Fire Department. All successfully were certified. And that includes the report for the month of March.
So Chief Seavock, are we fining them? Obviously, they never got a permit to do any of this.
No, we're not fining them. In most cases, what we're finding are that the property owners are very willing to work with us, and in a lot of cases, unaware of what their tenants have done. We've had some good cooperation in that respect, but as far as fining them, we haven't had anything come to that. Several of the slides that I showed you are situations that, in fact, have been resolved, and those things have been removed. A couple still remain that we're currently in process working on. We're fining them through our routine fire inspections, which unfortunately, we're still 24 months out on.
These are serious situations. I mean, and I know it's terribly frightful to get a phone call from Ed Cortan, but is there something more that can be done here? Otherwise, I mean, if there's really no penalty, I think they're going to continue doing this kind of thing.
I should say it this way, Mayor. We haven't had one that's reached where we've had to take it and refer it to the city attorney. We start with finding the violation on our fire inspections, contacting the other agencies we need to work with, zoning and building inspection, making the proper contacts we need to make, giving them a timeframe to comply. If they don't comply within that timeframe, it is turned over for legal action. In the case of the flammable liquids tanker, now that falls under what we can do with the fire code. Our fire inspector stood there in that shop until that tanker was removed.
I understand, but I mean, the point is, they have no motivation to not do it in the first place if they can do it until they're caught, and then we just make sure they comply. I mean, this behavior is likely to continue. And Mr. Colley, I think you were going to make a comment.
Yes, Mr. President, commissioners, there are penalties and fines that are included within our code. And in the event that something does get referred to our office, we would prosecute that through municipal court and have the court assess those fines and penalties.
Is it much of a penalty?
No, it's not. It's listed, I believe, as an offense, which is a thousand-dollar fine per violation per day.
And is the fine amount set by the state, or is it set by the city?
It is set by city ordinance, but in order to assess any additional fine more than that, it would be something that would be classed as a Class A misdemeanor or something like that, which would be up to the state's attorney to prosecute.
And if I may comment again, President Johnson and commissioners, there is a timeframe involved that can be quite lengthy. That's the way our process is currently structured.
These are, as you point out, these are very dangerous situations.
They can be.
Yes, Mr. President, I can just add to that. I mean, we are, under the zoning code, that process is a long process, and we don't have the ability to be able to write tickets or fines or anything that can get that immediate reaction. We've been fortunate with collaboration with the Fire Department and our building inspectors. Some of these violations, we have caught during inspections, and we've just said, okay, we're not going to allow any more inspections, so we have a little bit of leverage. And with that, people have been able to come into compliance. But if we went through the enforcement action, that would take some time to do that. And I don't know if there is another way around that. I mean, there is the safety issues that we have, and we have that as part of the building code, and we also have it as a fire code as well, but in many ways, we are kind of limited with respect to that, of forcing it right away.
Well, my question is, if we called Tawas District Health, and they went and looked at that facility, I'm sure that they would certainly have something to say about that. I mean, that is putting those, obviously, the people that own the company were leasing the building, and they were putting their staff at a risk like that.
I'm not sure how they would come into play. I guess I can comment on what I'm familiar with, the fire code, and how we can work with building and zoning. I'm not sure what they could bring to the table in addition to what we're looking at. And in the immediate threat to life, such as the flammable tanker, we do have the provisions to correct something like that right away. The fact that they're living, there's a residential occupancy in a building that wasn't designed for that, or a zoning district that doesn't support it, becomes a more lengthy process.
It just seems so strange to me that we can write a ticket for jaywalking, and we can't write a ticket for this.
We would be open to expediting the process if there is some way to do that.
I mean, is that, I guess, is it within our capacity to do that, or is this more of a state thing? Do you know offhand, Mr. Colley?
Mr. President, I think we have done some research on that. In some of these instances, we're confined by the administrative and the regulatory aspects of the fire code and the building code, which are adopted at different levels. When there's zoning code violations, then we have much more control over what goes into our zoning code. But the building code is adopted at the state level. The fire code is an international fire code that's adopted by, or promulgated by a different regulatory body. So what we can control is specifically zoning code matters.
So if they violate the codes that we've adopted, whether they're an international code or not, we can't write them a ticket?
There's some administrative procedures that we need to do some more research on to determine whether or not that is going to be possible or not. And we can do that and report back to you.
I think that would be a good idea. I mean, otherwise, I just, I think this behavior will continue. It's like, we'll continue to do it till we get caught, and if we get caught, then we'll fix it. But if we don't get caught, you know, if they get caught and there is a significant penalty, then I think they're more apt not to do it. They've, obviously, from the photographs, somebody's put some thought into this, and I don't think they're doing it out of ignorance. They know doggone well that this shouldn't be taking place.
Mr. President, I agree totally, and I hope we can pursue this and do the research that's needed and pursue it more. But there's another point here. There's a direct tie, these photographs, to House Bill 1358. There's a direct tie. And I hope you guys can take those photos tomorrow. This wouldn't be happening if we had cost-effective housing, if we had housing at all. And this is the kind of thing that if we can't extend our infrastructure and get the housing that comes with that, it can keep happening.
Commissioner Jackson, if I may, in one of the cases, our staff on scene asked the question, have you looked at whether there are apartments available or hotels available? And the comment was made that they may be available, but at the current rate that's being charged, this is the way that our company chose to go.
Yeah, but you have, their competitors are probably complying with the law. They're not, so now they have a cost advantage by not complying. I agree with what Mr. Jackson said, but I also think, you know, there needs to be a stiffer penalty than, gee, now you've got to comply because we're aware of what you're doing.
You know, when you're trying to get a mortgage on a property, for example, if there's exposed styrofoam, you have to rip it out or cover it with sheet rock. And then when I'm looking at this building with those propane tanks in the same room and no firewalls or anything, that is a very big hazard. You know, I just cannot believe that there isn't anything we can do.
And that's why we thought it would be beneficial to show you some of the pictures we've been capturing in the field.
Absolutely.
Virtually every week, we'll find living quarters. Some of them, like you saw, are quite nice, except the separations, the safety features, the things that need to make it viable aren't there.
Chief Seavock, as you said, you've come across us several different times. What's the most amount of residential space you've found in terms of how many people can occupy it in one structure in violation of our law?
If I'm not mistaken, if you remember the slide where it looked like there was a desk closing off a doorway, and I mentioned on the other side of the desk, there was a bed, I believe that was six sleeping areas in that environment. In the area that had the flammable tanker, in addition to the motor home, if I'm not mistaken, I believe our inspectors came back reporting, Mr. Cortan, am I right, saying eight possible sleeping areas in there?
If I recall right, I think it's more than that. I think it was more like fifteen. And they were sleeping upstairs, and if there was a fire, there'd be no access for them to get out. So that is, it is a dilemma that we are dealing with, Mr. Mayor and council members. Most of these that we're seeing are second or third tenants in buildings in which we, as a city, do not see anything. All of a sudden, they're open, running. The Fire Department may see a tanker, investigate, it's part of their reviews, but, you know, they don't come to the city, they don't come for any kind of licensing, any kind of review, and then all of a sudden, we have that. But we also have people, too, that are prematurely moving in before certificate of occupancies are issued. I know that Williston recently, I think several months ago, issued penalties, I think up to a thousand dollars a day if you- I think up to a thousand dollars a day if you moved in prematurely, even in single-family housing. That might be something for us to entertain and look at, uh, just because of the housing crunch that we do have. But it's becoming more and more problematic.
Well, I think, Mr. Coling, uh, something else for you to do here is, is to research this issue and see if there's things that we can act upon as a city that would, um, for lack of a better term, give us the ability to write a, write a ticket and, and take, you know, have there be a, a financial penalty to, in a sense, breaking the law here. I think we all agree, so. Thank you, Mr. Seavock.
Thank you.
Chief Dossinger, we'll hear the fire, or the police report.
Hi, good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. I have before you the March 2013 Dickinson Police Department report. Uh, for the month of March and accidents, we were fairly consistent with last year at this time. Uh, we had a hundred and six traffic accidents compared to eighty-seven last year. Gettin' runs, we had twenty-four. Uh, we did have four injury-related accidents and seventy-eight property-related accidents. Property accidents are those that occur on public streets and not private parking lots. Uh, we did conduct six hundred and eighteen traffic stops last month compared to six hundred and two last year. Uh, there were four hundred and seventy-six citations issued and two hundred and forty-four warnings issued. A monthly comparison for calls for service, as you can see, we are down from last year at this time. We had nineteen hundred and thirty calls for service compared to twenty-two hundred and eighty-six for March of 2012. And it's been kind of a consistent trend so far for this first quarter this year. As you can see, we had a total of five thousand four hundred and seventy-eight calls at the end of March compared to six thousand seven hundred and ninety-four calls at the end of March in 2012. Are there any questions?
Well, I think the obvious question is, um, you know, why are the calls for service down? I mean, what, what are you hearing? What are you experiencing? Are, are we behaving better or is there less activity in town?
Well, certainly the, you can tell by certainly driving our streets in town, it doesn't seem like we have less activity in town. Streets are busy with activity. Uh, evenings, the bars are full of people. Seems like the activity is there. I like to say that the people are behaving better in our town and some, hopefully, are some more proactive, uh, activities are, are helping, such as the traffic enforcement and, uh, some of the, the bar checks at night and, uh, being proactive. Uh, we do have a number of officers right now that are also in the, in the training portion of it. Uh, we have two officers at the academy in Bismarck that will be graduating at the end of this month, and a lot of our officers are doing a lot of training. So this, this quiet time, so to speak, is, is grateful for us right now.
Chief Dossinger, the report in the paper seems to be growing all the time. I want to commend your officers. They're doing a great job. The thing is, you know, after going through the police academy class, it's love respect. You know, there's so many people out there that do not respect the laws. The speeding, the running, the four-way stops, all of that, I don't think that's anything you can control other than just issuing what you're doing.
Yeah, we try to remain proactive with our, especially our traffic enforcement as much as possible. I'm sure you've all seen that people are running stop signs or, or going through a red light, just because the light means green, please look twice before you go through it. Some people are not obeying the traffic control devices. And we are being proactive with our, our speed radar boards that we set out. We've had them set up around 12th Street West, A Street Southeast, and over on Fairway coming down from Rocky, Rocky Butte Park. And we try to distribute them around town as much as possible.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Turn to engineering. Bill, what do you have for us?
Mr. President, Commissioner, I have a few things. Sorry, I have a few things for you this evening. Uh, the 12th Street West project, uh, the DOT urban project, uh, is currently out to bid, and bids will be received on Friday. That will be constructed this construction season. Uh, Mr. Kubis from KLJ notified me today that there may be an issue in the, uh, construction phasing of that project. Prior to today, uh, there was a phase that would completely close 12th Street between Highway 22 and the entrance to, uh, the strip mall on the corner. And after collaboration with Mr. Kubis and his staff, uh, I determined that maybe we should reconstruct the phasing and keep that street open. Even though the bids have not been received by DOT, there have been some business complaints to Mr. Kubis, KLJ, and, uh, already before construction even started. So I think that it was wise for us to change that construction staging to keep that street open. And those, uh, plans are now being made by KLJ and will be incorporated as a change order into the project after it, uh, is let to a contractor. The interim bypass route, that'll take a lot of the truck traffic out of the city and off of Highway 22, is, uh, the, the PSNE plan review will be all day on Friday, um, which I will attend, at least some of it. Uh, I haven't had a chance, uh, too much to go through the plans, but at least I'll be able to be there and, and kind of, uh, look through the plans as we go, uh, through the project. That project will also be constructed this construction season, um, with the full bypass route following within two years after completion of the interim bypass. The railroad grade separation along State Avenue at the railroad just was initiated within the last couple of weeks, and we're working closely with HDR and the DOT folks to make sure that we get the proper alignment, the proper structure and so forth, uh, so that, uh, the city will be, the city's interest will be maintained through that design process. Uh, you should be-
Oh, excuse me, but, so the grade separation is under design right now? It's in the design process?
Well, we're, it'll have to, it'll have to go through an environmental process first, but it's being, there's two different alternatives that are being considered, one over the tracks and one under the tracks.
Oh.
And, um, there's the initial, um, consideration, at least at this point, is that the grades probably will be too steep to go over the tracks. But when we, when you go over the tracks, the clearance level is, is about ten feet higher to get the train underneath the road than it is for the road to go under. Of course, you only have to get trucks under the train, so, um, so there's quite a bit of different distance and, uh, there's quite a bit of difference in the elevations and grades and so forth, so that, uh, we're looking at that and seeing which the best route would be to, to take. You should be aware that I, uh, Mr. Kessel has asked me to go out, uh, for RFQs for, for a drainage report study, uh, to be conducted here in, um, the city. And I have asked several firms to respond with an RFQ to prepare a drainage, uh, flood study for the, for the city. Uh, I think, uh, the price tag that we, the upper limit I think we put on that was two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand. I'm-
This is now related to the grade separation?
No, no, sir. Yes, this is something different. I have, uh, I have asked another project, the West Water Tank in Eighteen Inch Main. I have asked, uh, Mr. Kubis and KLJ to push that project forward and re-prioritize that as the top-level priority for the city. We have had interest from Myers and Roers to help us with the funding and construction of that facility. And I think it would, uh, be a good idea for the city to have that design ready and, so that when we reach an agreement with, with these developers, we can push forward with the construction of that infrastructure. We talked with Mr. Kessel and agreed that since KLJ is the engineer for the hospital, it would be in the city's best interest to, uh, provide another task for them to do the engineering for the realignment of the Empire Road. I believe that the city promised that to the hospital during the development agreement. So, uh, I've asked, um, Mr. Kubis to put another task order together for, uh, commission's approval. Hopefully, we can get that done within the next month at least. And the last thing I have for you this evening is that I just wanted you to be aware that the city staff, including the engineering department and Public Works, uh, people are working closely with KLJ to develop some standard drawings and specifications that we hope to have, uh, put together within the next couple of months for the commission approval, uh, that will be standing documents that all developers will have to follow when they submit, uh, development plans, so that, uh, all the plan sets will be coming in more or less, uh, following the same standards, so that they'll be easier to, uh, review and with the city can, uh, get, uh, what they want as far as the infrastructure. And that's kind of what I have for you this evening, good, unless you have a question.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for the city engineer? All right. And I guess maybe the only question I had, just to be clear, when you talked about the interim bypass, that's really the, um, the road from Exit 59 North, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yep, okay. We sometimes call it the reliever route, so, all right. We'll move to Tab 7, uh, community development. Mr. Cortan, you have, uh, three items here that you'd like to take us through?
Uh, yes, Mr. Commissioner, uh, Mr. President, uh, we have, uh, three rezoning petitions. Uh, they are the second reading. It's part of an ordinance. Uh, there are no changes from the first reading. The first one is Buffalo Ben rezoning petition. This is a petition from low-density residential to medium-density residential. Uh, the site is situated to the west of Tenth Avenue, uh, Tenth Avenue East. Uh, the property size is 3.56 acres, and the planning and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Cortan. Uh, this is ordinance number 1503. At this time, we'll ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on 1503. If so, step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public that wishes to comment. Uh, you've heard, uh, Mr. Cortan's introduction. Are there any comments or questions from Commissioners? Not? Would there be a motion regarding second reading, final passage of 1503?
I'll make a motion to approve second reading and final passage of ordinance 1503.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Stookard?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson? Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries, so we'll let you continue.
The next, uh, rezone petition is the consolidated PUD petition. This is a, uh, zone change from medium-density residential to PUD, planned unit development. Uh, the site is easterly of the existing facility located off of Tenth Street Southeast, and it is approximately three-fourth of an acre. The planning and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval contingent upon the seven attached conditions of approval. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Cortan. Uh, again, if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on ordinance number 1504, you may do so now. Just step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public that wishes to comment? Any comments or questions by city Commissioners? Would there be a motion regarding ordinance 1504?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
The last rezoning petition tonight is the Aldridge Street rezoning petition. This is from general commercial to high-density residential for five lots located on the south side of Aldridge Street and to the west of Tenth Avenue East. The site is approximately one acre. Planning and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Cortan. Again, uh, ordinance 1505. If there's any public comment, you may do so now. Just step to the podium, state your name, we'd hear your comments on 1505. Anybody from the public? There's no one from the public? Any comments by, or questions by city Commissioners? Hearing none, is there a motion regarding 1505?
Motion to approve.
There's a second.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Cortan?
Uh, the last item I have tonight is the March, uh, the ending of the March building permit report. I'll highlight some, uh, portions of that for your, uh, for the information tonight. Uh, the commercial projects are slightly ahead of last year. The, uh, single-family, if you noticed, are significantly lower from, uh, last year. Last year was a, uh, very, was the record-breaking year. Uh, we are significantly lower than that. I think that's primarily due to, you know, lack of lots that we have, uh, and, and the winter that we've had thus far, we're at twenty-four compared to a hundred and sixty-nine of last year. Uh, multifamily permits are down from last year, a hundred and sixty-eight for this year compared to two hundred and sixty-six. These are units. Uh, and the total housing units, that would include single-family and, and multifamily, is down from, um, uh, four hundred and sixty-one of last year to one ninety-two. Uh, there is a bright portion as part of the development report. Alterations and additions are significantly higher for permit values, uh, at 6.6 million compared to 700,000 we had last year. I think that's indicative of, um, of, uh, commercial land that we have, some of the infill that we're, that, that's being built upon. Uh, that's why we're having more alterations and additions for, uh, commercial properties. Now, what does this ultimately mean? Uh, I think at this point, we're well below last year. I think it's too early to predict. I would anticipate the May report will probably be the, uh, bellwether to indicate if we're going to be on pace of last year or not. We're in transition between winter and summer development season. Uh, we've had a, uh, pretty close to a normal winter season. We are significantly higher than we were the prior year in 2011, so it may be indicative of that. That being said, our permits are down. Our, uh, permit values will significantly, uh, will catch up and surpass, uh, probably in April. Uh, the Menards, the hospital and Sanford Clinic should be included in the April permit value. So I know that we're down roughly 20% in, in the, uh, permit fees for this year, and I think we'll be well over that when those values do come in. Uh, but, um, to give you a perspective, uh, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I, I looked at a development activity that has occurred, uh, the entitlements for developments over the last year, the two years, and, uh, eleven, eleven major projects are placed on hold. That means that they have received final plat approval or rezonings, and they haven't moved forward with that, and seven are under construction. Namely, the ones under construction are West Ridge, uh, the first addition, the ones that are on hold, that are going through that process, that are significant projects, are Pine Crest and West Ridge Two and Sundance Village and, and many others. I think that what we're running into is a lot of the development, if you look at our development along our maps, is along our perimeter. Uh, that's, that's not, that's no longer the low-lying fruit, the easy development. It's taken a little bit longer to develop. We have the capacity issues with respect to sewer, water and transportation, and I think that's delaying the projects. But I think May will probably be the, uh, big indicator if we're going to stay on course with, with, uh, with last year's, uh, record permits. Uh, the demand is still high. I'm still getting the calls. I'm still having the meetings. I think, um, Mr. Kessel could attest to that and staff can as well. Uh, I think it's ultimately just boiling down to capacity as a city in order to provide that. Commissioner, Commissioner Jackson has mentioned about the funding and providing those, uh, providing the infrastructure in order to keep up the development, and that may be the, uh, that may be the big issue that we have as we move forward. And with that, I conclude my report. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cortan. Are there any questions for, for our development director? All right, well, the next item then, um, is Public Works, and, uh, Mr. Zurov is here to introduce the next item.
President Johnson, Commissioner, um, I'm not sure why I'm last on the agenda, but I am used to being last. I am used to being last with my, my last name, so.
Yes.
First item I have is, if you remember at the last commission meeting, Phase 2 project to the water main replacement was approved, and the notice of award was done. Since that time, last week, I did go to the Department of Transportation pre-construction meeting for the Villard Mill and Overlay overlay. And at that time, I found out that they are starting that. In fact, they did start that project, and they want to have that Villard Mill and Overlay done by the 1st of June. That was not communicated to the city on that. So I did meet with Manitou Construction, who got the award for the Phase 2A, and it looks like we can maybe get it done before the Mill and Overlay is done with the, you know, by the timeline. But also, I remember the last commission meeting, you asked if that was the last water main replacement project, that Phase 2. There was another one, Phase 2B, which includes the College Area Edition and two other blocks of East Villard, from 8th to 10th Avenue East. I'm trying to get that done also before the Mill and Overlay is done. That would, and I'm looking at trying to do a change order on Phase 1A to include those two blocks. The tentative estimate for that change order, using the figures on the previous bid, is $339,561. I don't know if I can get it done, but I would like to have it approved if we can get that done also before it's overlaid. So I guess my, what I'm asking the commission is for is to approve a change order that would not exceed that amount. I believe that would maybe be the best way to do it. And if we can get that done, it would, I think, benefit everybody.
And the whole purpose of this is to put this pipe in the ground before they do the Mill and Overlay, as opposed to have them do the Mill and Overlay, and then we go dig a hole in, or a trench in.
Right.
New pair, yeah, new blacktop, so.
Right.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jackson?
Mrs. Zurov, did we, did we talk to the DOT about a change order on their project? Push back that completion?
Well, we had our, we're having a pre-construction meeting the 25th on our project, and the DOT and their construction management team is invited. Hopefully, at that time, we can coordinate where we can get everything done. Our contractor is willing to start right away, and so hopefully we can coordinate within DOT and their contractor. I think Northern Improvement will also be at that, at our pre-con meeting, so hopefully we can get it, get it done.
Okay. Another question I have. So in summary, the $339,000 change order is for how many blocks of water main replacement?
It's a little over two blocks. I think it's about 1,200 feet.
Okay.
There is a, a couple different things on that. I think there's a storm sewer they have to bore under, and a couple other little, you know, additional things to that.
Well, it seems to be a prudent thing to do is try to get this pipe in the ground before we get some nice new pavement.
Right. And, and I guess that's why I'm here before you now, because they're, they're getting started. And we're going to have the pre-construction, pre-construction meeting the 25th, and I'd like to have that available also to get that done.
Mr. Jackson, you're our resident engineer up here. Are you comfortable with this?
It sounds like a lot of money to me, but, that's why I was asking.
That is the estimate, Mr. Jackson. KLJ just took what the other figures were, and we figured that this would be the most. I tried the last two days to get a exact amount, what they're asking for the change order, Manitou Construction. If it is too much, I think we can wait. I mean, I'm not going to, there's, you know, if it, if it, if it looks like it's too much, I think we'll just wait and do it.
I assume you're getting the same unit prices, though?
Yes, yes. Yep. That's what was used.
Well, so, Mr. Colleen, if we act favorably on this, it'd be a motion to approve a prospective change order not to exceed, say, $340,000?
That's correct, Mr. President, yes.
Anybody care to move that motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Now, further discussion. I mean, again, Mr. Jackson, we kind of listen to you on these types of items.
Well, if you're getting the same unit prices, you know, then, then we're just piggybacking on to a open bid letting.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Well, we have the motion and the second, then we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Stuckard?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Do you have some other items?
The only other items I have are just project updates. As you're probably aware, the Public Works Building groundbreaking and pre-construction meeting scheduled for tomorrow has been canceled. There were some issues also with the contractors on, they're coming from Minnesota, and it just wasn't looking good. So that's not canceled, that's postponed till a later date. Sorry. Not canceled. Another project update, the Rocky Butte and 4th Avenue East Elevated Reservoir Project. Looks like it'll begin in May. They're going to start with the Rocky Butte Reservoir, and then move to the 4th Avenue East Reservoir. With that project, they're sandblasting and recording both of the reservoirs. The last meeting, we updated you on the water reclamation facility, and last Thursday, when we went out to the water reclamation progress meeting, it was also attended by the new refinery project manager and the project engineer with the refinery. And I think they were pleased with the progress and the timelines we had in place. The Influent Pump Station, which is the main pump station that feeds the water reclamation facility, is getting about done with final design. They're still working out some easement and land purchase agreements, but hopefully we'll have that project out for bid soon. What else do I have? At the end of the month, we'll have some Consumer Confident Report, the Water Consumer Confident Report will go out with the bales, along with the spring newsletter from the Solid Waste Division. And I, the crew's also been busy with snow removal. And I'm sure everybody's had questions about the snow removal for the city. The crew started Sunday morning, and we've pretty much been going 24/7 on snow removal. We've had personnel from the Solid Waste Division, the Street Water Division, equipment and personnel from all divisions trying to remove the snow. In fact, I was stuck in Montana because I couldn't get back for the weekend, but when I got here yesterday afternoon, there were 13 trucks lined up, ready to remove snow downtown. The only problem yesterday was it, when it was getting warmer, some of the wind rolled snow, was getting too hard to blow with our blower into the trucks. So that slowed us down for a while to get rid of the snow. But today, it looks like it was working a lot better. Also, we have a hydraulic angate on our, on our blades that usually works to try to alleviate plows in front of driveways. That doesn't work with this heavy of snow, because we're pushing way ahead of us. So I do appreciate the citizens' patience with us, and I guess I want to also commend the crew for, for working the long hours they have been removing the snow.
So we do have snow gates. It's just that they're not effective in this much snow.
This, in this heavy of the snow. It's, you can't, you know, it's so heavy of the snow, it doesn't work.
I was in Bismarck for the weekend and got snowed in, and staying with my brother in a residential area. And, and when the plows came up his street, their snow gates didn't work either, and they, they piled up a, a real big pile of snow in front of the driveway. It's just like they knew the mayor, Dickinson, was in Bismarck, and wanted to make sure he worked a little bit. So it's, it's not just our city that.
No.
That's heavy wet snow.
Sure not intentional.
Yeah, no, heavy wet snow is a tough issue.
I guess.
I am curious. I've been asked the question today. How, roughly, how many staff can we mobilize to work on a snow emergency? And when I was first elected, I think the number I had heard was we had about 125 miles of streets. Do you, do you happen to know how, how many miles of streets we have? And, and again, how many people we can mobilize at one time?
I think my understanding is over 300 miles of streets.
Okay.
And.
If you're talking lane miles, it could be.
Yeah.
But you're talking actual physical miles.
Actual miles, yeah.
Yeah. I, I don't know that number off the top of my head.
Okay.
I can get that for you, exact miles.
Well, within four or five feet would be fine, you know, that's.
Can I get back to you a little later on that?
Yeah.
We have the, all the street division was out, which normally is about 10, 10 employees. We had five or six from, well, vehicles, and probably three or four employees from the Solid Waste, and up to five from the Water and Sewer Division. With equipment and trucks going 24/7, we had, you know, 15 to 20 people working on, on snow removal.
Okay.
And also, we do contract out other areas of the, of the city. So that is without the contracted areas.
Right, yeah. Okay. Other comments or questions for Mr. Zurov?
Only that, Mr. Zurov, you're kind of new with the city. When the mayor was first elected, the Model Ts just did not need as much width in the streets as we have now.
Mr. Jackson?
And gravel roads absorb more snow then, too.
All right, you're both out of order.
Thank you.
That was, okay. Any reports or comments by city commissioners? Is there anyone from the public that would like to address us? If so, come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All saying aye. The motion carries.